Bill, did you say wait?
No, a wave.
Oh.
Just a wave.
All right, we're all set, yeah, we can go.
Yeah.
Okay. Bob, thanks for joining us.
Hey, thanks for having me.
Absolutely. So I'd like to call the meeting of the Hollis School Board to order at 6:00. I will dispense with any of our preamble of the meeting so we can get right to it. Do we have any agenda adjustments this evening?
We should do the -- notify the people at home that we have some participants.
Yes, thank you for reminding me. So we do have a member, Member Kelner is calling in remote on the phone here. And there's a -- how do we do this? You ask?
Just why, what's the need for her to call in?
Okay, Amy, can you just, for the record, state the need for, why you're calling in remotely rather than being here?
Yes, I am on vacation in Maine.
Okay.
And then is she by herself?
Are you currently by yourself where you're calling from?
I am.
All right, she's certifying that as well.
And then all votes tonight just have to be by roll call because Amy called in.
Sounds good.
Okay. Thanks, Amy. Agenda adjustments, if any?
Well, it's not an adjustment, it's just a question to the board. As you know, on Thursday afternoon of last week, we lost our power because of the fire alarm panel getting fried. I just want to make sure, we had one question from the business office with regards to your packet. Do you have the business office memo regarding the retained fund balance?
I'm looking, I didn't see it.
No, I didn't receive any.
Okay, see, that's what we were afraid of because there were two different pieces and we didn't know which one got out. So Gina's just going to make copies, so you'll have that. And then Amy, what we'll do is, do you have access to your email account?
I do.
We'll email that to you momentarily.
Okay, perfect.
So we can move on to the next thing, knowing that those pieces will arrive.
Okay.
Thanks.
So there was some discussion also, I had some side discussions out of session about procedural items regarding approval of minutes and maybe the secretary should be moving motions to approve minutes. Andy, I don't know, you know, from your standpoint, is that more procedurally correct or is that a practice we should pursue?
It doesn't have to be in that format, and I say that because the secretary isn't always guaranteed to be here, just like any member. So it's more a board member who's comfortable with the minutes can make the motion to put them in front of the board and then move forward from there.
Okay. Tammy, where do you stand on that?
Well, generally, my thought was that it shouldn't be set in stone at all. Any of us has the right to move on any motion.
Yes, yes.
It's gotten, we've gotten into a habit of I make the, I make a motion and a different board member seconds it. I mean, it's a little bit minutia, but we have, even when I was secretary, I thought, how, what's the secretary's responsibility if they're not even moving the minutes?
Right.
So it seems to me if the secretary's here, the secretary ought to move the minutes and read the, any amendments that are requested or recommended or suggested or suggested.
Yeah, I mean, if, you know, that's fine, but I do agree that anyone can move those minutes forward, but if, certainly the secretary would like to take on that role, I am certainly fine with that.
On the other hand, the secretary's not here today. So we will stick with our practice a bit.
So it's, we'll go, we'll freestyle this evening then. All right, so let's go ahead and approve any of the meeting minutes outstanding.
So I move to approve the minutes of the Hollis School Board meeting of June 5, 2019 with the following amendments. Page seven, line two, replace understanding with understands.
A second.
Any other changes or modifications? Seeing none, by roll call, all in favor?
Aye.
You have to say, state your name.
Oh, Carol Roy, aye.
Okay. Amy? Are you there?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Yes, sorry, I'm abstaining.
You're abstaining?
She wasn't, yeah.
You weren't here, okay.
I'm at the last meeting.
Oh, that's right. Rob, aye?
Tammy, aye.
Okay. Any other?
Three, zero, one, okay. Good, yeah, we have another one. Follow my map here. I move to approve the minutes of the Hollis School Board meeting, public hearing of June 5, 2019 with the following amendments. Page two, line 37, delete the before Ed Hinckley. And page three, line three, insert quote, "to be of concern," close quote, following quote, "a number of things would have to fail at the same time," close quote.
A second.
Any other changes or discussions? Seeing none, I'll call the vote by roll call.
Carol, aye. Amy abstains.
Amy abstains, Rob, aye.
Tammy, aye.
Okay. Is that everything?
Yeah.
We're all current, yes. Any nomination, nominations, resignations and/or correspondence?
Yes, we had one resignation. As the board is aware via email, Colleen Mikovic has moved on, she went back to Massachusetts. When we get to the student services update, Bob will give you an update on that and the steps we're taking.
Okay, that's fine. Any other items?
Just the, for the board's awareness, we have Bob, Gina, and I here tonight. One of the goals that the SAU Board has asked is that we look at meetings and start to tailor attendance of the SAU administrators based on what's on the agenda.
I think that's great.
So we're going to start working towards that with the hope of, it'll probably always be two out of three, but it's just a matter of which two will be on those nights.
Yeah, I guess that's, that's agenda-driven.
Right, exactly.
I've always liked that practice and I'm happy to, you know, do that.
That's it for nominations, resignations, and correspondence.
Okay, we, moving on to, with four minutes ahead of schedule, principals' reports.
Yeah, I just wanted to highlight for the board and spend a couple of minutes just on enrollment. As I had emailed you, the big change that has occurred over the summer is, as a result of move-ins, it has now grown to be five families. We will have a new preschool self-contained program for our three and four-year-olds. We're very excited about this. We commend Bob and Amy who have worked on this to pull this off. It is a, once again, something that does constrict our budget. We've taken a couple of steps to that. We had a fourth grade case managers position up at the Hughes that was open. What we decided to do is shift around some caseloads. We have a dual-certified reading teacher slash special ed teacher. So we had a series of students who had reading, language arts kind of as their specific domains in their IEP. So she's picked up those students and we're using that position to assist with the need to hire paras for the preschool program as well as to pick up some of the services of OTPT. So it's a move we're quite comfortable with because if you look at our other class projections, they're in really good shape. Kindergarten, we are projecting right now, as of today, 61, the 25th of July.
Is that still the four classrooms?
That is still the four classrooms of 14, 15, 16, and 16, and we have an 18 for our max there. Grade one, we have 89 students, that is significantly above the projection by Nezdeck of 73, but it gives us five rooms of 17, 18, 18, 18, and 18. So there's a little bit of a concern there. We're watching that and monitoring that. We have a couple of strategies we can take. Obviously, if a large group came in, we could add another teacher, but we'd probably do this late in the summer, is just put in paras supports to help reduce that teachers' ratio. In grade two, we're at 77 for 14, 15, 16, 16, and 16. And in grade three, we're at 85, and both grades two and three are above the Nezdeck projections, so they're 16, 17, 17, 17, and 18. So the primary school numbers are very, very good and we're happy with those. Moving up to Hughes, we'll have 96 in the fourth grade for 18, 18, 20, 20, and 20, well below Ed's specs. Grade five will have 98 for 19, 19, 20, 20, and 20. And grade six will have 101 for 19, 20, 20, 21, and 21. So again, in very good shape. So we're predicting as of July 25th that we'll open our Hollis District with 617 students.
So these numbers are as current as you've got? You don't have some kids that still need to join this list at this point?
At this point, as of the 25th of July, that's exactly what we had.
Can I ask, I'm sorry.
Please.
May I ask a question about special education and other related student services loads? Is there, aside from those kids in the special preschool program, which I'm excited about for, I'm glad they're staying in district and that we have found a way to, to look after them in their home district. Are we seeing any particular increase or decrease in our special education and other related student services loads?
I think the-
At the primary school, at the upper elementary, between?
I think the biggest thing, Bob, jump in and correct me if you feel differently. I think it's students coming in that need one-on-one assistance for paras is a piece of the budget that you can't capture when they're not here. And I think the other piece is the occupational therapy and the physical therapy cost between the two buildings. We have it covered, but it's, it's a significant cost item. To give you an example, about a month ago, when we sat down with Amy, we put it at about $250,000 of new special ed costs that we'll be absorbing in the budget.
Say it again, say that again?
It'd be about $250,000 worth of new special ed costs. Just to give you an example-
But that includes the preschool kids?
It includes the preschool kids, but from the standpoint of us hiring a teacher. If we were to place those preschool kids out, a typical cost would be somewhere between 80 to about $120,000, depending on transportation. So those five children could have been in the neighborhood of half a million to three-quarters of a million dollars, but by building the in-house programming, which Amy has worked so hard over her career and Bob's picking up on, we're able to defray that large number, but it's still a big number we have to find in the budget.
So I guess what I was really, what I, what you said I expected. What I was asking about more, had to do more with, I mean, I guess they're directly related, I realize that, but what I'm really curious about is adults-to-students type of ratios. Do we have an increase in the type of students who need extensive additional help? Do we have a number of kids this year, for example, aside from that preschool cohort, because I understand they're unique? Are we looking at a change in any way, up or down, in the intensity or the extent of services? I'm sorry, I keep directing to Andy because he started.
No, that's okay.
Bob, welcome, and I'm so happy to see you here.
Happy to be here.
Extends, extend, extremity, I guess, of services, like maybe we have fewer sped cases or student services needs, but they each need more services or less? I'm just curious what the mix that you're saying is coming through.
Yeah, I would say from what I've learned in a short amount of time is it's not necessarily an increase in the number, but we're definitely seeing kids with some very unique needs. To Andy's point, that require additional services. So as we're wrapping up the hiring process for the primary school, we have added two paraprofessional positions.
So that's interesting because I'm noticing that grade two and grade three, the enrollment is not as robust as in the other grades, but if you're suggesting that at the primary school we have more, we're hiring more paras because of the need, then that wiggle room gives us a chance to really serve these kids well.
Yeah.
Is that, is that accurate?
I think anytime you can keep the classroom ratio down and you integrate a student who has to overcome educational challenges, it serves that student better.
Excellent, thank you.
Any other questions relating to enrollment?
Nope.
Okay.
The only other piece of the principals' report I'll cover during the facilities update because it was just more talking about where their buildings are at for the summer.
Very good. So why don't we move into our discussion, SAU barn, Hollis School facilities update?
Yes. If you would be kind enough, and Amy, I did just email it to you, I hope it has arrived. I'd like to kind of go through the, it's called the FY21 warrant bond planning, and I'm going to kind of walk you through this so you understand what the document is. To start with, during the end of the school year, we provided you with five alternatives for the SAU barn.
Yes.
We are narrowing those down. We have an H-Step meeting next week, and I think in September we'll be able to kind of come forward, which we believe is the best solution for the barn and a potential ballpark cost at that point. We'll get a much more specific cost in November, December, but I think we'll have a ballpark for September to start to get that discussion going with the Budget Committee and just so the community's aware of what we're talking about. The second and third piece of that request for a potential bond by the Budget Committee was based on our capital improvements plan and some needs of our facilities. So I'd like to first start by thanking Kelly because she put this document together so that it would be kind of a clear and concise way. So if you look at this, we start off with the security system at HPS. You see right now, we don't have an estimate on that. Those will become firmer because we just started the budget process about three weeks ago and we'll be moving forward. Cameras at HPS, cameras at Hughes, heat system balancing, replacement chance phase two, classroom cabinets, phase two, classroom furniture for kindergarten, classroom furniture for phase one, parking lot and roof drains, main office carpet, parking lot ceiling, intercom speakers, fencing, additional new window shades, fan replacement, parking lot seal at Hughes, a playground fence at Hughes, a water bottle filler station, classroom furniture, and AC and A ship art guidance conference and library, the four rooms that we're looking for as part of that. Those pieces are marked with next in budget. You will see those in the budget. They will not be part of the capital improvements, they will not be that, there'll be maintenance tryst items, things of that nature.
Okay.
From there, we move into, you'll see us start to use the columns on the far right, which says bond, and we have H-Step. And right now, we're just taking anything that's related to energy and putting it under H-Step, and then obviously the capital improvements portion. So we have exterior wall lighting of the parking lot. We see that as part of the bond from a CIP point of view. The office maintenance AC, again, that would be a budget item. Parking lot repair is also a budget item. Playground equipment for the field, we have that under CIP, would potentially be part of the bond. Classroom hallway flooring, phase one, that would be at HPS. Again, we have that part of the bond under the CIP. The HVAC valves and unit ventilators, that would be part of the budget. The underground tank repairs are part of the budget, and I will update you on those, I'll make a note to come back to that. The phone intercom, that is for Hughes, that would be part of the CIP plan and be part of the bond. Student restrooms would be under the budget, and the gym bleachers would be under the budget. Interior lighting would be part of H-Step. Exterior doors at HPS, H-Step. Exterior lighting at HPS, H-Step. The 13 classrooms for the air source heat pumps would be part of H-Step. The boiler consolidation in this building would be part of H-Step. The heating control system while mounted would be part of H-Step. The shading devices on the south side of the HPS would be part of H-Step. The potential shift to propane at HPS would be part of H-Step. The enclosure of the back entrance overhang would be part of H-Step. And interior lighting at Hughes would be part of H-Step.
Andy, question on the shading devices, south side. In the model, when we were first looking at that, we had these like, on the exterior side, they would be like cast shadows. Are those the devices you're referring to?
Yes, for those who are newer to the board, we would have an outside external shade or awning that would pull out, which would drastically reduce the sun glare on those four or five first grade classrooms with sun glare. But they would be designed so when we get to the winter season, when the sun isn't really that strong and when we actually want the sun, they would push in, they would also push in so the plow trucks could make it down the side of the building and not take off all our awnings. So those were part of our original design that we delayed because of cost elements.
Okay.
Are there any other questions on page one? I think it may be easier, Rob, actually, that was a good segment stop. Okay. Moving to page two. At Hughes, we have foam insulation completion would be part of H-Step. Gym and locker room ventilation would be part of H-Step. Potential for additional solar panels, part of H-Step. Air handler three would be part of H-Step. The unit ventilators are the air source heat pumps for those four library areas and library computer rooms and two other places would be part of H-Step. The Munters unit recommendation is part of H-Step. Then HPS ceiling tiles are part of the CIP. Interior doors is CIP. Cement block painting of foundation at HPS is CIP. The painting of the red block gym area is a CIP. A water system upgrade, HPS would be the CIP. Restrooms in HPS would be part of the CIP. Low-pressure old pipes would be part of the CIP. Water pump to building pipes, CIP. Upgraded domestic hot water would be the CIP. Substandard plumbing fixtures would be part of the CIP. Gym and the cafeteria replacement is part of the CIP. Turtle Island is an update for the CIP. HPS, the underground tanks would be part of H-Step. Roofing, library and classroom wing of the first grade is part of the CIP. The sprinkler system is part of H-Step. Kitten and the sanitary sewers upgrade would be part of H-Step. Kindergarten access is part of H-Step. Traffic issues is part of the CIP. Hot water pumps is part of H-Step. Asbestos abatement is part of the CIP. First grade to library door is CIP. Front entrance safety enhancements is part of the CIP. Playground fencing is part of the CIP. Hughes traffic flow reconfigurations is CIP. Gym floor refinishing is part of the budget. Exterior painting and power washing is part of the budget. A water district evaluation would be part of the CIP. And replace the Drury Lane drain, wow, is part of the CIP. And when we say that, there are three components of budget, H-Step, and CIP. It also would be who would be in charge of governing that activity. So if it's a budget, it falls under Kelly Sealy. If it's an H-Step, it falls under the H-Step committee.
Okay.
And if it's a CIP, Kelly and I share those long-term projects, and what we're trying to do is determine ultimately what type of bond the Budget Committee envisions and what items they want to eliminate. So the next step will start to prioritize these items with the SAU barn being second to the H-Step projects. So H-Step would be concluded, SAU barn, and then CIP items.
Okay.
But what we wanted to do is give the board a clear indication of the magnitude of what we're looking at, the multitude of items that have to be looked at, because we are still sitting in a 50-year-old building here at HPS and Hughes is no spring chicken either. But at the same time, as you can see from the external upgrades we've done, the new internal doors, the building is, our custodians do a fantastic job. In both buildings, we have given much more useful life to both buildings, and we envision by potentially doing a bond if the voters support it, that we can eliminate a lot of this and catch up on maintenance issues and really enhance the learning environment.
Andy, can I just ask a couple of questions?
Sure, always.
What enhancements are you talking about with Turtle Island and traffic issues?
We are, have asked the Nashua Transportation-
Safety Board.
Yes, to come out and look at all six of our schools for traffic flow issues. If you've been here in any afternoon during buses and traffic pickup and everything, and one of the things we're looking at, like in Hughes, we have a road that goes three-quarters of the way behind the building. Can that be extended? Because if all of a sudden that was the bus pickup or parent pickup, we'd drastically change traffic flow. And really, it's, it's not just traffic flow or inconvenience, it's safety. We're talking about young children who don't always pay attention, you know? And we all have hectic lives, phones are ringing in the car, maybe kids are screaming as we're picking up an older sibling, and it's just that worry, you know? So Kelly, again, is going to bring them in and they'll give us kind of a full recommendation of what we should be looking at.
So that's what that means, kind of changing the flow, so those two things actually go together?
Correct.
Okay.
And you know, if, if we lose some space for Turtle Island for traffic flow, whatever, you know, what can we do with this piece of property over here to the other side of the building? So maybe from an educational point of view, moving Turtle Island, if that would enhance safety and traffic flow.
So the two are kind of linked in the-
Yeah, I mean, because the problem we face is just the sheer volume of cars, we're going to have to figure out some way to at least widen it, because the other piece we create is this road becomes a nightmare and safety vehicles may not be able to get to respond to some point in town because there's no place for a parent to go, even though we all try to pull off the road and do that, it's very, very difficult.
Yeah, I've seen that.
Thank you for the question.
So we're looking at traffic-ish assessments at both schools?
Correct.
Okay.
As well as at the co-op.
Oh, okay.
You know, we're looking at all six of our buildings-
Yes, you did mention that.
Because they are a regional agency and that's their expertise.
Okay.
And our traffic problems are just not here. You go into high school at 2:35 and it's, it's not pretty.
Yeah.
I have a bunch of questions.
Sure.
Are any of these, are these like round one, round two, round three, round four, or are these, these are, this is something you're really going to pursue, all of these?
I don't know the total magnitude of the dollars, so, and I'm not quite sure what the Budget Committee had in mind for a, a bond, but at the same time, I think any amount that we're able to do will reduce our capital improvements items, which will allow us to get ahead on the maintenance side, because we have a wonderful maintenance trust and we've been making very good progress. So I don't want people to think that our buildings are not functioning, they're functioning very well, they're very effective, it's just like owning a home. You build that home, if you build it from scratch, everything is brand-new usually when you move in, and then 20 years later, everything starts to go. The appliances, the roof, all of that, and then you get this backlog, and that's kind of what we're in, is a backlog.
Right.
So I'm surprised to see asbestos abatement on page two, it's about 10 up from the bottom. What is that?
The windows in the first grade and in the conference room at HPS, to give you an example, the glue that holds those windows in has asbestos. It's totally fine, it's encapsulated, there's no worry, but it's some-
So it's something that was grandfathered in, and the state's on top of, and the district's been on top of all along?
Oh, yes, yeah.
Nothing new?
Nothing new, no. We have, I think, most of our buildings have some form or location of asbestos, and we have regular updates. Occasionally, we get surprised, you know, we start a project and we discover that some is there. If you recall, when we did phase one of H-Step, we had the roof here tested for asbestos because it was such an old roof and so many years of roofing materials, and it came back clean. But we make sure that we're always doing that, but we are aware, and Chuck has been aware for quite some time, of the glue in those, I'm going to call them fishbowl windows. And I'm not sure that I would like, I would like to eliminate the fishball windows just from a security and safety point of view. I don't necessarily like the idea, it was a great concept when it was designed many, many years ago, to be able to see the kids in the room, and now our security habits have changed.
There are a lot of things on these lists that, that have never been really broadly talked about before, and I, it's, it's a little bit, it's just- And I, it's a little bit, it's just a lot to take in. And none of this includes the SAU project, so.
No, it doesn't.
Yeah.
No, but I think at the same time, this is not necessarily, everything that's sitting in front of you isn't necessarily going to make the list.
Well, that's, I guess, what I was asking before, is this like a first round of?
This is everything. This is everything, and then the H-Step Facilities Committee will start to discuss what the priorities are. And I think we'll lump it by, you know, I'll call it tiers. Because at some point, we'll get to a tier where maybe we don't want that bigger bond.
Right.
So, and it may be the difference between going for a 10-year bond versus a 15-year bond.
So this is not telling the public today that we intend to do all of this by next year, under a bond, get your wallets open. This is about a list of things that need doing and we have to prioritize and figure out what fits and what we can.
This is kind of the same process we did with H-Step. Where we're starting with everything, we will narrow that down as a committee and then we'll hold public forums. But this way, everything is out there tonight. People understand what needs to be done, we understand that there are only so many dollars. And again, we will prioritize some H-Step items because there's a return on that investment. My second priority would be the upgrade to the SAU facility. And then what items we want to tackle for the CIP. And some of them are kind of intertwined, they might be labeled H-Step here. But that's because we need the expertise of an architect to oversee it. And I'll give you the example. The kitchen. We don't, Kelly and I don't have the expertise to make sure that we'd be giving a cost figure for a kitchen that would pass modern code. One of the things I think the board is aware of is that kitchen is still grandfathered from the sense of the grease trap. That goes into our current septic. If we were to upgrade the kitchen, that has to be changed, so there's a specialty aspect to that. And that's where we want to tap into Dave's expertise. So some of these were shifted over to Dave, not necessarily because they're an energy project. But it's also about the credentials and the expertise that's going to be needed.
I like the fact that we're working from a comprehensive list. Because I think it's important to have something on paper rather than white space. Because, you know, I suspect we'll be adding the estimation, estimate numbers here. And continue to kind of develop this. I also like the fact that we're categorizing these things to, from budget to bond. Even CIP, right? Because we could argue that some of these things, we could, because we have a CIP mechanism now and a way to fund it. So depending on how these numbers come out, prioritizing can be vertical and horizontal, right? Because vertical is like, you didn't make the line. But the horizontal is, we move this to our normal CIP strategies and our funding strategies. And then maybe within that cohort, we prioritize even further. But, so it gives us latitude in saying, well, here's what it looks like all-in on a budget for all this stuff. And here's what we can do to mitigate concerns. We can move some of these items into our, into our normal CIP approach. Which pulls money out of any kind of bond proposal. So I think it's important, it gives us, it gives us a lot of different ways to move money around, to create most favorable scenarios. And then hopefully bring a nice, solid recommendation that we can bring, not only through the bud, through the committees and budgets or boards. But then easily communicate it out to the community as well.
Right, and I think the other thing it does, it allows us to also inform the community what is not going to happen. You know, if we set a dollar amount, then we have prioritized our list, just like a funnel. We're pouring it at the top of the funnel, what comes out the bottom is what we're going to be able to do.
And it gives a nice understanding of the magnitude of what we're doing and how many things we're really looking at.
Well, and selfishly, from an SAU standpoint, it's also set us up that we don't really have a lot of work to do CIP-wise, those type of things. Because it's all laid out here.
Yeah.
So if we decide certain things can't be done, then we'll start with, you know, FY22, these are the items, FY23, these are the items, like we traditionally do.
Yes, exactly.
You know, as the budget committee looked at, the wanting to finish H-Step, looking at the discussions that have gone at the SAU. There's also a certain threshold where you have to ask yourself, you know, to me, it's going to be a big enough amount to justify a bond. So I think it's that balancing act, as we discussed the last time with H-Step. And we settled, our goal was like $2.5 to $3 million, I don't know what that'll be. We intend to kind of, Kelly will lay this out for the budget committee this coming months. And she'll also give them the five scenarios of the barn. So that they'll have it all in the upcoming weeks. And then we really have four months. So this will be a major topic for the next few months at our board meetings.
Okay.
I have a question about the, sorry, I can't let this go right away. The kitchen that you brought up. So when the septic tank had its little bump a couple of years ago, was it three years ago? And that was repaired, and in that process, we, I thought we bought a plan from consultants on the kitchen upgrade. So that it could be triggered by, it'd be ready should a septic failure trigger.
We bought a septic plant.
The septic plant.
Not a kitchen plant.
Not a kitchen plant.
Okay.
We just know that.
But I, as I, I thought, I thought that there was also a kitchen planning component to that, no?
No, because if the, I hate to say it, but if the septic fails, doesn't force you to upgrade the kitchen. But if the kitchen fails, it does force you to upgrade the septic.
Oh, I thought it was the other way around, okay.
No.
Okay. All right, and then, hold on. So this document you showed us today doesn't prioritize anything, it just places a funding mechanism.
It just tells you where we believe it should be coming from, from a funding source. Many of these first items you see, I can tell you are going to be in FY21.
Two, right? 21, you say FY21, yeah.
So many of those items are already, I know are going to be in FY21 when they say the budget.
I mean, my first impression, you know, as we were going through this, Andy, was that, yeah, the budget items seemed very clear to me.
Right.
However, some of the things that we're saying in H-Step, I suspect you could make a case, it's capital improvements. Or capital improvements could be H-Step. So I suspect as we go forward, there'll be some conversation about, hey, does this really belong here, maybe we should move it here? So, you know, I'm sure the committee's going to delve into this a lot deeper.
Right, we meet next Wednesday, I will tell you, there are some items that you would say, well, why is it H-Step? My answer will probably be because of the architectural need and oversight.
Yep.
That's one thing we definitely learned through the H-Step process is you cannot, it's not wise to plan the budgeting without the input of a, an architect with strong structural engineering experience. And that's data for sure.
I think what would be helpful from a communication standpoint and allowing stakeholders to consume this easily. Is if you can give some kind of ground rules of what constitutes a decision that says this item is CIP. Or what are the, what are the, what are the attributes on this that constitute H-Step?
Yep.
So these, this is the measuring stick we use to do it. Now, people might disagree on that methodology, but they can't, it's there, we're telling you what we used.
Right.
I think that would be helpful because I think it would avoid a lot of minutial debate on, well, I don't, why do you say that? And then you've got a whole list to go down and everyone's going to be debated. So, you know, if we just have the criteria, which we said, if it's this, this and this, we feel it falls here. If it's X, you know, A, B and C, falls, falls under the H-Step.
Yep, no, happy to do that, and I promise you, you will see the list again, it might be smaller, I don't think it'll be larger.
Anything else on SAU barn Hollis School?
Yeah, just on the facilities, I want to publicly take a moment just to thank our custodians. Our buildings are progressing very, very nicely. A couple of big things have been accomplished, we're sitting in the new competent learning commons, that's all done. All the window sills that weren't be, able to be, they've got a primer last year because we had to open, have been painted and upgraded. The make a space down here is, got the new tile floors all installed, that'll be waxed and cleaned up shortly. The bathrooms up at the Hughes have all been stripped, and they'll be getting their new tiling coming in. And the playground equipment is here, it'll, I believe it's scheduled for next week to be assembled. And just so the board knows, we'll be taking down somewhere between 20 and 30 pine trees behind the playground for student safety. We had somebody come out and kind of examine all the trees. As much as I hate to take trees down, I, we can't risk children being out in that playground and a storm coming through, as we've witnessed recently. And one of those trees coming down, so they'll be done before school is opened.
What are they doing with the trees? Is the person cutting them going to take them?
Yeah, the person cuts them.
Toward it?
Yes, they.
Or reuse it or something?
They take the trees that kind of offset some of our costs. And they eliminate all the limbs and grind that up into wood chips. And then the lodge logs, they take with them and they are used for whatever purpose that the company purchases for.
So that whole area back there is all poison ivy, could we please be sure that it's treated before the project's completely done? It's so maddening, that whole back fence is just.
We will work on that as well. Because we'll finally have some room to get behind the fence because there won't be trees.
Right.
So, again, to thank our custodians, the buildings look great and I see no reason why we won't be ready for an opening.
You've got new rugs in here, that's good, you've got it done?
Yep.
Awesome.
That's it for the.
Okay, why don't we move to student service update?
Yeah, I just wanted to update the board on the hiring of the district special ed administrator position. So upon receipt of Mrs. Mikovic's resignation, we began the screening process to hire a replacement. That included reaching out to the New Hampshire School Administrators Association. As well as the New Hampshire Association of Special Ed Administrators Association. I also reached out to colleagues in neighboring districts just to get that word out. So we did have a pool of candidates. Upon screening those candidates, we identified two candidates that exceeded the minimum requirements for the position. So last Thursday, August 1st, we had a screening committee get together. That was a representative group, we had a related service provider, we had two classroom teachers, two special educators, two para educators. We had a parent representative, we had a building level administrator. And as a result of that process, it was, we conducted essentially a one-hour interview and then a 30-minute writing prompt. And from that screening process, the committee has moved forward the name of Ann Elser to Andy at the SAU. Ann currently serves as the Assistant Director for Student Services. So a little bit of a domino effect. Now that we are moving Ann's name forward for the coordinator, the administrative position, we'll be looking to fill the Assistant Director position.
Wow, that's very fast. You guys got, got a lot of work done in a short amount of time.
Well, obviously, the goal would be to have someone in place as soon as we could. And obviously, the timing of the year made the need to move on this pretty quickly. So, and we're very comfortable with Ann, I mean, that's a, that's a huge win for the Hollis District.
Yeah.
So, just for the purposes of the video archive, who are you?
Oh, who am I? I'm Bob Thompson, I'm the Assistant Superintendent for Student Services.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you as well.
There are people.
Yeah, that's true.
That are in this building who have no idea who you are, and I think a formal introduction.
Yeah, so, well, thank you, I appreciate that.
Just to remind people, Bob is the recent, recently moved on principal of the middle school and knows most of our kids for the past seven years pretty well, so.
And we were joking earlier that he's the one that mentions the snow days, so on the community page, lots of people will learn from that.
Right.
Same guy.
Just from my perspective, I'm very lucky that our, that SAU 41 was able to keep you in district.
Absolutely.
I appreciate that positive feedback, thank you.
Why don't we, is that, is there any other questions or anything we need to cover beyond the update?
That's all that I have.
Any questions?
Yeah.
Then why don't we go ahead and move to the Mitsubishi case study?
Yes, in your packet, I provided you a case study that was done by Mitsubishi Electric. And working with Dick Henry, our consultant, who has been with us through the H-Step process. And I just want you to provide it with, to you, so you could look it over and review it. And then I'm going to, during deliberations, ask you to formally approve it because Mitsubishi would like to publish this. We, my understanding, we are the furthest school north to have installed heat source air pumps as their primary heating piece. Because traditionally, it's been used down south because of the cooling and they're not looking at the heat. And they really wanted to talk about, you know, taking a 1952 building whose R-factor of the outside walls was one. And now really giving it decades more life by the change we were made. So it's a pretty in-depth white paper that they intend to publish. And at the same time that they would gain some notoriety from that for them. It also, I think, sheds a very positive light on the work that H-Step did in the Hollis community and their support. It also reflects well on the architecture, architect that we use in Dave Ely. Our engineers and our energy consultants, who will be with us for the second phase of H-Step. So, you know, it's just more to give you an idea and then officially, you know, I think the board should approve if something should be released because it's your schools.
Yeah, makes sense. Any questions relating to the case study?
Are there any, anything having to do with, maybe not asked us, but basically are not being compensated for, but if we're moving forward with them. Any sort of monetary benefit to us allowing them to do this?
Well, what it has done, they have come back into the picture for phase two of H-Step. And they're looking at some of the technology that's changed in the last two years. And we may not need to install one unit in each of those 13 classrooms. They believe that we can use some of our capacity and do things slightly different. They'll also be providing us some extra expertise along with Dick and John Henry. Around what we're doing to the consolidation of our boilers. How best to tie this into one efficient system. Because we still are merging some 1950's technology with some, you know, 2020 technology. So it's more getting their expertise, so not necessarily dollars. But I think we will see that in terms of dollars with their recommendations.
Great, thanks for the description.
Okay, moving on to the enrollment update.
Just a second, oh, I see, this is just discussion, I beg your pardon, go ahead.
I just want you to point out, I'm very happy with our enrollment projections going into the FY21 budget. The one piece that we'll be looking at as an SAU is just kindergarten. That's a very difficult number to project. And last year, NASDAQ, as you'll see, struggles with that number as well. Because we closed, the private kindergartens closed. So I think basically taking what's in kindergarten is going to lead us to a very solid number in grade one. So that's it, the other projections, I was very happy with, we do see a nice bump in grade one. And that kind of potentially foreshadows what they're projecting as an enrollment increase over the next five years. I don't know if that will stay consistent because I think a lot of it has to do with the economy. But I was very happy with where we came out.
Do you see the fact that we're down like upward, I think it's like 54 students from last year? Is that because of that cohort of kids, that bubble of students that moved on?
Yeah, the bubble comes from almost half of that number. And that's kind of what NASDAQ is kind of projecting, another bubble, so I don't think this is going to be consistent. I just, I'm just not sure, because what I've learned in my five years, we are a community that is very dependent on the economics of the companies around us. So when BAE and Fidelity and all these are hiring, people are coming in and looking at the educational communities. And we're always on their list.
Yeah.
They might not choose us, but I guarantee we're on that list. So it's just a matter of that. And then the other number that NASDAQ is watching more so than we are is town permits. You know, where are we heading with new home developments? Are there any large parcels of land, those type of things?
There is a fair amount, I mean, anecdotally, but there seems to be a fair amount of activity going on right now with even just existing housing turnover. And some. And some construction, so.
Potential land for sale for the purpose of development.
Yeah, absolutely.
But it being August, I think housing, construction won't impact us quite too much.
Correct.
Right. But the move-ins, the real estate.
But the move-ins.
So, it'll be interesting to watch, and I think it really does come back to the economy. We'll have another presidential election. There's so many factors that in fact impact enrollment.
Yep.
That I'm very comfortable where we are now. We'll be writing to NezDek in the next couple of weeks for this year's projections.
Okay. I'd like to move on to the math materials update.
Okay, so, as you recall, the voters approved as part of the FY '20 budget, as part of the new items, the upgrade to Envision's 2.0.
Yes.
And the materials have arrived. If you recall, Hughes got the whole enchilada, the whole package, and HPS opted for more of the curricular resources for the teachers. So, the materials have arrived, and we'll be beginning professional development along with the Brookline colleagues who have already implemented 2.0 for the past few years, and I'm just excited to move forward with it.
Yeah. Do you think we'll be, are we on trajectory for the new school year with this?
Oh, absolutely. We are going to hit the ground running.
Great.
Do you have any information about, you know, one of the most exciting things you've presented so far that I could wrap my own wee head around was the idea of testing fifth graders for aptitude as a way of, you know, seeking who needed, who had some potential for a different approach for their math. So, I don't, you must have reported, and you know how I am, I forget things. Can, do you have anything you can summarize about how effective that, that testing was?
So, if you take a look at the cohort of sixth graders that just completed the program based on having tested in grade, when they were in grade five, they all, in both districts, successfully completed a combined sixth, seventh curriculum in sixth grade, and they were all recommended to participate in Algebra I for seventh grade.
How many Hollis students? Can you remember now how many?
I believe 18 were from Hollis.
18.
And if you recall, that's a large cohort. So, it is a little down for the next year, but there were 30 extra students or some, something like that in that cohort. And so, you know, time will tell to see how they manage Algebra I, because it's Algebra I with some eighth grade standards, in seventh grade, and then geometry for eighth, and then, you know, really, we have to take a look at this over a six-year period of time. Where do they end up? Some concerns from years ago when, when a vast, I would say almost a majority of students were offered a similar opportunity and potentially some weren't ready. You saw that impact in 10th, 11th, and 12th grade. So, we'll take a look certainly and watch them over time.
What was that impact? What do you mean, you saw that impact at 10th, 11th, 12th?
So, they didn't have necessarily a strong foundation. They didn't have that, a deep understanding of some concepts, and some of them took a turn away from math, so just lost interest. And some would argue based on their lack of a solid foundation, so.
Do you envision that we could bring some sort of, over time, metrics that would show, hey, this is what we were doing before these materials, and this is what we're doing today? This is the impact it's had and the positive?
Based on the curricular resources we're talking about?
Well, I think the materials themselves and acquisit, acquiring those, getting our professional development in place, does it cause our students to embrace math more and maybe more enthusiastically? And is there a way we can show that in some sort of data-based reporting?
You know, I have planned another data presentation, which we will look at last year, but my hope is to do that every year so you can kind of watch those cohorts over time.
So, it'll be built in, basically?
Yeah, and so I think we'll be able to take a look at some test scores. We'll also be able to have anecdotal feedback from teachers, because what I, a difference that I see is just the, the use of math language and the level of sophistication that some of our students in Brookline use because it's part of the daily programming of this 2.0 version. So, we'll see.
Okay.
I'll certainly do my best to share.
Super.
And then pushing back into grade three, four, 3, 2, 1, this is the year we start with the extra .5 math FTE. We've had one and a half, and then we've got a full two, full-time FTEs on math at the primary school. We still have our specialist at the upper. And that's to capture more of the kids who need extra help as well as support the kids who are ready for more. Is that correct? Did I summarize that correctly?
Yes, thank you.
And then we have our new environmental science teacher.
Yes.
Starting in the fall. Very exciting, so.
Yes.
Any other comments or questions relating to math? There will be a test later, so. All right, moving.
It's not a bad test.
Moving on to deliberations to see what actions the board will take regarding the policy memo submitted by the Policy Committee.
Okay, so, if you take a look, I'll just go policy by policy. The first ones that were presented for third reading and adoption had no changes from the June meeting, so they were presented exactly the same. The first is JFAB, Admission of Tuition and Non-Resident Students.
So, I move to accept the third reading and adopt policy JFAB, Admission of Tuition and Non-Resident Students.
A second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, by roll call?
Carol, aye.
Amy, aye.
Rob, aye.
Tammy, aye.
Thank you. Our next one is ADB, GBEC, Drug-Free Workplace. Once again, no changes.
I move to accept the third reading and adopt policy ADB slash GBEC, Drug-Free Workplace.
A second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, by roll call, all in favor?
Carol, aye.
Amy, aye.
Rob, aye.
Tammy, aye.
Okay. Next, we have ADC, GBED, Tobacco Products Ban.
Move to accept the third reading and adopt policy ADC slash GBED, Tobacco Products Ban Use and Possession in and on School Facilities and Grounds.
It's a long one.
I second that as read.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Carol, aye.
Amy, aye.
Rob, aye.
Tammy, aye.
Okay. Moving on to KDCA, Information Distribution and Display.
I move to accept the third reading and adopt policy KDCA, Information Distribution and Display.
A second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Carol, aye.
Amy, aye.
Rob, aye.
Tammy, aye.
Excellent. And finally, GCPA Reduction in Instructional Staff Workforce.
Move to accept the third reading and adopt policy GCPA Reduction in Instructional Staff Workforce.
A second.
Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor?
Carol, aye.
Amy, aye.
Rob, aye.
Tammy, aye.
Great. And then for a second reading, we have policy DJ, Purchasing. No change from last time.
I move to accept the second reading of policy DJ, Purchasing.
A second.
Any discussion on DJ? Seeing none?
Need to have read it aloud? No.
This is the second reading?
No. I'm just trying to mix it up a little bit. It's getting monotonous. Seeing none, all in favor, by roll call?
Carol, aye.
Amy, aye.
Rob, aye.
Tammy, aye.
Okay, looking at policy DJB, the change that was made was to switch price to value, and that was based on the conversation in our June meeting.
Mm-hmm.
So, I move to accept the second reading of policy DJB, Purchasing Procedures as Amended.
A second.
Discussion. All in favor, by roll call, please.
Carol, aye.
Tammy, aye.
Rob, aye.
Tammy, aye.
Okay, moving on to policy EHAB. So, this is one of those policies for data governance and security. I would like the same policy to be adopted in all three districts. And when it was brought for first reading in Co-op, they noticed that I was, that I had forgot that an S for ISO in some areas, like B1, the District Information Security Officers, ISOs, we, we did name two in our policy, and so just to be consist, I'm sorry, in actual plan, so to be consistent with our policy to make sure that there's an S there. And there are a couple of other S's that I've added throughout for the same purpose.
So, I move to amend the second paragraph of Section C by inserting, wait a second. Hang on a second. I move to amend the second paragraph in policy EHAB, second, the second paragraph of Section C by inserting, is this correct? Of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment.
Sorry. The other change was, it says Assistant Superintendent, and they had requested at the Co-op, which makes a whole lot of sense, to be more specific about which Assistant Superintendent. I offered to give the responsibility to Bob, and he declined. I'm the Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, and so that is my full title. So, it was added. I forgot that amendment as well.
Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment.
So, that's in Part C.
Instruction and Assessment.
Yep, page two of the policy.
So, we have the two.
Yep.
Yeah, I just needed to write it down because I'll, I need to. Okay, so to amend EHAB, right? So, I move to amend, the, sorry, policy EHAB, second paragraph of Section C by inserting, quote, "of curriculum instruction and assessment following, quote, Assistant Superintendent", and accept the second reading of policy EHAB, Data Governance and Security, as amended.
A second.
Any further discussion? Thankfully, all in favor by roll call.
Carol, aye.
Amy, aye.
Rob, aye.
Tammy, aye.
Okay, moving on to BEDG Minutes. Once again, I made some changes based on our conversation in the June meeting. Some of them were captured in the, in the motion, but it wasn't presented, there were enough to where I wasn't sure what was in the motion and what was just discussed, so I put everything in there to include names of makers and motions, makers of motions and the results of all votes, is new language, and the five business days instead of the 144 hours, so.
Well, the motion that's presented to us by our recording secretary is recommended it doesn't include your amended language, so should we read out the whole thing? For the second reading?
Yeah, it should be captured.
It's very short, so.
It should, I think it should be captured.
All right, so, policy BEDG, as amended, now reads, it's called Minutes, and it now reads, "The secretary shall keep a record of the actions of board meetings. The board may provide a paid transcribing secretary to record minutes of meetings. The minutes of the board shall be maintained, filed securely, and posted online, available to the public. The minutes shall include all motions and resolutions, including the names of makers of motions and the results of all votes. Papers not a part of a formal motion may be omitted if they are referred to and identified by some method. Copies of the draft minutes of a meeting shall be sent to the members of the board before the meeting at which they are to be approved. Corrections to the minutes may be made at the meeting at which they are to be approved. Corrections shall appear in the official minutes and in the minutes of the meeting in which changes were made. All minutes shall be kept in accordance with RSA 91-A colon 2 and 3, Roman numeral 3, and will be in the custody of the superintendent, who will make them available no later than five business days after the meeting to interested citizens on request. Parentheses, 72 hours from minutes of non-public sessions closed, parentheses, and below those are all the legal references." So, I move to accept a second reading of policy BEDG Minutes as just read.
A second.
Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, by roll call?
Carol, aye.
Amy, aye.
Rob, aye.
Tammy, aye.
Okay, and our final policy is BEDH, Public Participation at Board Meetings. We have a ton of public present right now. And there have been no changes since, since Sa- June.
I move to accept the second reading of policy BEDH, Public Participation at Board Meetings.
A second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, by roll call?
Carol, aye.
Amy, aye.
Rob, aye.
Tammy, aye.
Okay, moving on to see what action the board will take regarding the Mitsubishi case study.
I move to support the release of the Mitsubishi case study.
A second. I hope the administration will urge Mitsubishi to let us know if they get feedback.
Okay.
If we, assuming we pass it today.
Absolutely.
I agree with that.
All right, all in favor of the motion, by roll call?
Carol, aye.
Amy, aye.
Rob, aye.
Tammy, aye.
Moving on to see what action the board will take regarding the Business Administrator's recommendation regarding the retained fund balance.
In your packet, and I had emailed it to Amy, Kelly submitted a memo regarding the retained fund balance for the Hollis School District, which falls under RSA 198 colon 4-B dot 2. It is her recommendation that the retained fund balance be maintained at its present funding level 152,000 for the following reasons. It ensures the retained fund balance is tax-neutral as compared to last year's tax rate. The school district's budget already contains a contingency fund of $95,000. The district has a maintenance trust fund if urgent repairs are required, which can be used to supplement the retained fund balance with proper approvals. And I will put forth the motion that she's asking for. It's to retain the sum of up to $152,000 of school fund balance from the FY '19 school year as the end of the year available funds balance, funds allowed, excuse me. Just to give a quick update on this, this is something we had been monitoring. Kristin will give you the revenue and expense reports on a monthly basis, basically from January on. We were concerned that we were not going to be able to meet the retained fund balance through the efforts of everybody involved, the building principals all the way up to the, through the SAU. We were able to do that, where, you know, it was a very difficult budget last year. We had the completion of the H-Step process, some unexpected repairs to certain building pieces, as well as some unexpected services that we needed to provide students. We're kind of heading into the same budget again this year because of some of the, the new students who have enrolled. So, I'd like to thank Kelly for all her efforts, and Kristin, because this is something we monitor, and it's something that we really try hard to retain that fund balance if some unusual emergency should come up.
It's amazing that you got there. I just really didn't think you were going to make it this time.
Gina threw in a nickel, Bob threw in a dime. It was just amazing.
Excellent. So, Andy read the motion, so I'm so moved.
One second.
Sure, I can. I second it.
Okay. Any discussion on the recommendation from the Business Office? Seeing none, all in favor, by roll call?
Carol, aye.
Amy, aye.
Rob, aye.
Tammy, aye.
Very good. Mr. Superintendent, is there any other business this evening?
Just one thing I want to let you know of. It's our, our plan as an SAU administrative unit, along with our buildings, we will be doing our strategic plan presentations of our goals and objectives for this year, but this year, we're going to do them, if everything works out, at the SAU meeting, so all the boards can look through the lens of the child, whether it be a Brookline student, a Hollis student, a Co-op student, where are we heading, what are we doing? And I think for the first time, you'll really see how a goal at the elementary level plays into the Co-op and how the, we've worked hard utilizing the strategic plan to make sure that we're, you know, looking at this through the lens of the child. You know, it's, we do a lot of things that are business-like at board meetings, and it's really what we work hard at, where the board has been so helpful, is to keep remembering why we're here.